Good morning, good morning, and good morning again.
Morning.
Hey.
Morning.
I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order the chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
I'm here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for your love, grace, your mercy, Father, all the blessings that you freely give us. We do ask today, Father, a special blessing on the mayor, his administration, and this council, Father, as they go through this final day of their service to the city. Father, we thank you for them. Father, we ask for your blessings on them as they continue on in their lives in whatever endeavor and whatever situations you place them in. Father, we know that they'll just seek you and serve you as they have for so long here. Father, we pray for the new mayor and his administration as well, and that new council that's coming in next week, Lord. We just also pray that you continue to bless them in this transition time as well as our city. Just again, guide us through this day, Father, in the business that's at hand, Lord. Let us honor you and glorify you with all that we say, do, and thank. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the city council meeting held on October the 25th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October the 21st through the 27th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
We have a proclamation here. It's Ms. Laura Johnson here directing of Manor. From the City of Gadsden, Alabama, a proclamation, and whereas the City of Gadsden is committed to the welfare of its citizens, especially those in need, and whereas Manor provides for the physical and emotional well-being of our residents who are elderly and homebound by furnishing a daily nutritional meal and companionship, and whereas 75 volunteers delivered almost 27,000 meals last year to over 115 clients, and whereas donations from places of worship are one of the biggest sources of funds to sustain Manor. Now therefore, I Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim November the 20th, 2022, as Manor Sunday. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gadsden on this first day of November in the year of our Lord, 2022. Sherman Guyton, Mayor, Ivana Nelson, City Clerk.
I just want to take a few minutes and say thank you for recognizing Manor. Manor is a big part of the City of Gadsden. And I also want to take a minute to thank all of you that are leaving the council and mayor, because I know that Manor has been and held a special part in all of your hearts. I have received so much support from probably each and every one of you of some sort, so thank you for all of your service that you've done for our city and for Manor. And I hope that when you leave, that y'all will continue to keep Manor in your hearts, because we're not going nowhere. We actually served over 267 different people last year. We currently serve about 115 meals a day, but it can change from day to day. So y'all just remember Manor and farewell and good luck. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business. We have an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget to reflect receipts and appropriations of the Edward Byrd Memorial Justice Assistant Grant tolling $26,219 to be used for the purchase of dry suits and dive computers. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So move.
Aye.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 411 Van Courtland Street in District 6, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days on September the 27th. There is a recommendation from the building officials to table the resolution for additional 30 days. What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that we table this for an additional 30 days, please.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving an alcoholic beverage license at Quikity Split Mini Market LLC doing business as Quikity Split Mini Market II located at 2300 Forest Avenue in District 6, has applied for a retail beer and table wine license off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? You want to speak in opposition?
Oh, no, I just want to speak on behalf.
Okay.
No, just stay right there.
Stay right there. Is there anyone to speak in favor? All right, now that's you. Your name and address, please.
My name is Laurent Kencilo. I'm the owner of Quikity Split in East Gadsden and was interested in opening up the store on 2300 Forest Avenue.
Did you live up to your bargains in Quikity Split, number one?
Quikity Split, I have.
All right.
I have.
I know that you have.
Thank you. A little nervous.
Any questions from the council? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Yep. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
We have a resolution authorizing conveyance of property located at 35 Monarch Avenue, and the owner has offered to donate this property to the city. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is a piece of burnt property. It's been burnt probably a year and a half, so we're just really going to have to tear it down and just take possession of the property.
No business? We have none?
We didn't vote.
I'm sorry.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
No business? Is there any department reports? Okay, at this time, we'll have remarks by the council, and I'm going to go first. Then y'all can repeat everything I say after I say it. First, we did a video this morning, and I don't want to forget, but I'd like to especially thank Mr. Chamberlain Parker. He was the one who has been, even though you saw Mr. Rogers at the Hems, Chamberlain was the one who did the video, and we're very, very proud of the video. You did a great job. You did a super job and just want to thank you very much. But at this time, I want to personally, to the mayor, to the city leaders, especially the city members, the city departments, I'm humbled to have served and shared with this council my ups. They've shared with me my ups and my downs, and I value your friendship. My experience for eight years has been very tremendous, and I have witnessed a lot of accomplishments that have made, been made due to this council. Even though some of you did not see the video, one of the things that you all need to know that the wellness center that will be built, the sports park that has been built, that this has already been paid for. In the last four years, the city has not had to borrow any money to pay for any of the things that the projects that we've done. I looked at my sheet the other day, there were 29 projects that have been done by this council and by this mayor in the last eight years that I've been here. We've had drainage projects that are ongoing that this council has been responsible for. And so I'm very, very, very proud to be a part of the council. I haven't had to fight these gentlemen up here. They've been very nice and respectful for me, to me, and I want to thank them for that, because, you know, I've always said, and I still say, that people don't have to be nice to you. And so I appreciate their kindness. I appreciate everything that they've done, and we're leaving the city very healthy, very healthy. Financially, there's stability in all our departments, you know, nothing is perfect, but still, we have some stability. And I just want to, you know, I want to thank all of you, and there's this one poem, it's not a poem, but I want to say this, and this will be the end of my conversation, but, "Beyond this place of wrath and tears, loom but the horrors of the shade, and yet the menace of the years find and shall find me unafraid. It matters not how straight the gate, how charged with punishment the scroll." But I want all of you all out there to know that I am the master of my faith and I am the captain of my soul. I want to thank all of you, especially the constituents that have come weekly to listen to us, and I just want to thank everybody. It's been a good, good experience. It's been, I would say, it's been a good ride, and I'm praying that the next administration and the next council will take up what we've done and go to higher heights, do better than what we've done. And so I wish everyone, if I could have left earlier, I would, but this has been a good day. I said when I first came that it's a great day in the neighborhood, and I'm leaving with a great day in the neighborhood. And I want to start with, I'm going to start with Councilman Back, Councilman Wilson, then I'm going to go to Councilman Worthy, then I'm going to go to Councilman Williams, go to Councilman Cannon, and the last, and the oldest, and the eldest, Councilman Reed.
And the one who have the least to say.
Councilman Back.
Well, thank you, Madam President, and I say that with a lot of love in my heart and a lot of respect. You have done an outstanding job as our leader of this council, and it's been an honor and a privilege to serve, not only with you, but with everybody sitting up here on this dais. It's been a very interesting four years, as we all know, but we have come through this, and I think we're better and stronger for it. If you haven't had a chance to see the video that Chamberlain, that Dr. Toles referenced about Chamberlain Parker and Michael putting together, it'll be on the full version, it's going to be, I think, available around Thursday, if I remember right. So that'll be, that'll be something I urge all citizens to watch. It's basically a history of the last 16 years of what Mayor Guyton's administration and the various councils have achieved, and it's very factual and it's very, very encouraging. And for those of us that are going to be serving again, and I see some familiar faces out in the audience, we have, the bar has been set very high. And so I look forward to that challenge. But just want to end with, it has been a real honor and a real privilege to be on this council with the council members, Councilmember Williams and Councilman Worthy, of course, Dr. Toles, Councilwoman Toles, Council, Councilman Cannon and Councilman Reed, those that are, that are not coming back in a, in a week. It's been a real honor to learn from you. I think Councilman Wilson will agree that you come to the council and you kind of have an idea of what you're going to do and how it's going to go, only to find out you don't really know anything. And that's certainly happened to me. It was a very eye-opening experience, very positive in a, in a lot of ways, but there's just so much to learn, you know, a large city, four, 500 employees, $56 million budget, 20-something departments. It is a big machine, and it's not, it's not something you just kind of walk in and then just kind of know everything. So the leadership that you see up here has been very helpful for a new council person, and I'm very grateful for that. Love the friendships, lifelong friendships that I've made here with these council members, and something I will always cherish. And wish you all Godspeed and real even and smooth roads, and may the wind always be at your back. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we get into the formal part of my comments, I do want to just point out that Gadsden's own Cornell Williams is now the head football coach at Auburn University. We are now the proud hometown of an Auburn football coach. That makes us one of, I think, only three cities in the state of Alabama that have ever had Auburn football coach from there, so albeit maybe briefly, we can celebrate this moment and find the silver lining.
Technically, he's an attala boy, but I'm not splitting hairs.
We claiming it.
Are you going to get into talking about whether we're all in this together on the very last meeting? Anyway, on to the matter at hand, you know, it's been such a, like Councilman Back said, it's been such a learning opportunity for me. You come in and you have ideas about what you can accomplish and what you, what you can, the impact that you can have and what skill sets that you can bring, and it's only been an opportunity for me to have those, have those skill sets developed by everybody around here, you know, and something that I learned probably the most here. And you see this unfortunately in social media a lot, you know, the goal of politics is not to destroy your opponent, you know? The goal of politics is to win your opponent over, you know, to convince them with eloquent arguments why you feel like you're right and they should come over to your side. And you see all these people unfortunately on social media, especially around election times, that burn bridges and lose friendships and, and, you know, part ways with people that they've known for years and years and years in their lives because of political disagreements or supporting this candidate or that candidate. And what I want all you guys to know in the public is, I've been in opposition to just about everybody on this council at one point or another over the last four years on one or another particular issue, but when this meeting is over, every single one of us respect each other, and every single one of us walk out in that hallway and we continue these conversations in an orderly manner, and these individuals have always been there for me to support me, even when they didn't agree with me, even when they knew I was going to come in here and wax poetic from this microphone, they still told me what they thought, they still tried to help me when they could, and even when I disagreed with them, the very next day, I could pick up the phone and call any one of them, and they would help me on the next issue at hand. And so it's been such a privilege for me as a leader in the professional business world to come into this totally foreign environment and be guided by some people that have so much history and so much experience in doing this, and they taught me how to be a better leader, and they taught me how to be a better public service and elected official, and I couldn't think of another group of diverse individuals that I would have rather been a part of for the last four years. And in the words of my pawpaw, I'm sure he's not the original author of this, but he used to always say, if everybody in the room agrees with you, you're in the wrong room. And so thank you all for allowing me to be in here and play a part of this role, and thank you for all the impact that every one of you have had on my life. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy.
All I can say is thank you. I gave my farewell speech about three weeks, a month ago, because I wasn't planning on coming back, but they needed me, so I came back, so thank you.
He thought he was true.
Yeah, I thought I was true. But I want to say thank you to Ivana Nelson, our city clerk, and her whole staff, because I know they got tired of me calling them all the time, but I called them all the time. They helped me every step of the way, and I, it kept me out of jail, that's the main thing, so I appreciate it. And to Lisa back there, Ms. Lisa Rossa, we had our ups and downs, but thank you. Every time I called your office and asked you for a question or something, you always helped me, so thank you. And I can go down the list. Even Mike Hilton, thank you to him, because I would call Public Works all the time. He would answer the phone every time I called him, just about. So, and to the rest of the staff. You know, 34 years with the city, 26 as a police officer and eight up here, I'm going to miss it, but I want to also say thank you to the eight officers, because we are so short with our police department. We got eight officers that came out of retirement to be SROs, and I'm one of them, so I just want to say thank you to them for protecting our kids because they need it. And thank you all so much, and thank you to everybody that's sitting up here. I really appreciate you all over these past eight years, and thank you so much. Thank you.
Councilman Will.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, again, at the risk of repeating some things, thank you so much to the mayor and his staff, and thank you to this council. I love each and every one of you. You know, I appreciate the partnerships that we've established over the years and some of the hard work that we've done as a, as a council. And of course, thank, thank you to all of the city employees for all of the hard work that you do. You, you're like the, you know, I often tell people that, you know, we get to function like the swan floating across the top of the water, and then there's city employees who are like the feet scurrying under the water that you never see. And so we really appreciate you. We're nothing without you. And full disclosure, I have a favorite, and she's sitting right over there, Ivana Nelson. She's my favorite. I love all of you now, but that's my favorite. So it needs to be, that needs to be clear. I appreciate, I am the luckiest city council member because I have the best district by far. I don't have nearly the hard stories that they do, and I appreciate it because I have a district full of amazing people. I probably got the most diverse district, but it's likewise, and I think that's what makes it the best district. And they are now in good hands because I guess, I wish I could take credit for handpicking him, but I just chose to support him. And Steve Smith is going to be an amazing city council member. He's going to do things much greater than I probably could have done. You couldn't, you couldn't have made a better decision. It's one of the best votes I've ever cast, and I'm so excited to be here. I'm not going to get in the way, but I'm available if you need me, for sure, and I appreciate you. I'm excited for you. Today, I brought my middle grandson. You know, I told you guys when I, when I gave my, when I gave my statement about not, deciding not to run again, you know, there were a couple of prevailing reasons. You know, obviously, professional responsibilities were one. You may not know this, but every four years, I had to go through that conflict of interest discussion with, with the legal department to decide if me running and being an elected official was okay. And, and, you know, we always managed to find a way to make it work with me, me operating under a specific set of rules. So, so, and it's worked fine. I have no regrets there. I appreciate my employers for letting me serve as an elected official. My, my parents both have hit the seven zero mark, two, three score in 10 years. They're both dealing with their own personal health challenges, you know, and I'm an only child. So, you know, it's one thing to devote yourself to this life of public service, but you know what? It's time. It's time for me to spend some time with my parents, and I plan to do that. I'm going to be with them for the holidays and enjoy it and let my dad tell those stories over and over and over and over, but you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna enjoy them while I can. And, and then of course, there's my grandkids. You know, I, I do a lot of what I do. I'm almost done, man. I'm going to do a lot, I do a lot of what I do because of him and his little sister and his older brother. Part of what we have to commit ourselves to as seemingly responsible adults is to what tomorrow's going to look like for these young people. This guy here represents a lot of what, you, yeah, you. This guy represents a lot of what society has become and what is and what's, what makes us great as a nation. I think he's a beautiful child, partly because he's a makeup of a lot of different things. One of his grandmothers is part Cherokee Indian. One of his grandmothers is white. And it doesn't hurt that his, his GPaw is good-looking as well. That, that part doesn't hurt, but, but, but he, he's just made up of a lot of different things, of diversity, and, and he's incredibly bright, and he represents what our world is today. Now, if you don't like that, shame on you. That's your problem. If you don't like that, shame on you. But I think he represents, again, what has made this nation great over the years. What makes us great in athletics? What makes us great in terms of our economics? What makes us great in terms of our strength as a superpower? It's the diversity of our thought, and it's the diversity of our people. And so I'll leave you with this, because you guys know that my, a big theme that I have in everything that I do and say is love. I think it's important that, you know, and it's one of the reasons why I support Councilman-Elect Steve Smith so much, because he's a big love person. He, you know, everything that he does, he does it with a big heart. And, and, and I want to convey to the incoming mayor, to the incoming council, to continue to exude the love that's necessary to be a public servant, to continue to drive the element of service. You're not here to lead in as much as you are to serve. And don't think about your position as an elected official from a position of power. You're here as a servant first. Never forget that. And never forget, as I've shared with Steve Smith several times, never forget that you have to be the voice of the underrepresented. That's so important. One of the many blessings that I think God has granted me is the ability to sit at the table, be a person that understands how the sausage is made, and be able to convey that to the people that may not understand how the sausage is made. So I do appreciate that, and I'll leave with a very, I'll end with a very wonderful, you know, I was watching a Mandela movie. The timing couldn't have been better. I was watching a Mandela movie over the weekend, the one that Idris Elba plays in, where Idris is Nelson Mandela. And near the end of the movie, probably the bottom third of the movie, he's walking out in a courtyard and he sees his, two of his grandkids fighting, or actually, no, they're actually out there poking fun and doing this at the white security guards. And he sees it and he stops them. Hey, stop! And they stop, and they turn around, and he said, why are you doing that? And they said, because we're doing that to make fun of the white security guard. He said, you're doing it because of the color of their skin. He said, that's not right. It's not right when they do it to you, and it's not right when you do it to them. Never do that again. And it was amazing that that moment, that that example presented itself at the time that it did, because I want to tell us as a, it's important for us to be mindful of the mistakes that we've made in our past, but let's get, let's be better than our past moving forward. Let's be better than our past moving forward. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a big speech I'd already prepared to make and all that, and, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, in 19- here thinking, in 1973, there was this 14-year-old little boy that wanted a job, wanted to go to work. He went to work for the city at a baseball field with a stick and a bucket picking up paper. He did that for a couple of years, then one year he helped with the swimming pools the city had. He didn't get paid that year by the city. Them employees kind of made up and gave him some summer money that year. And then in '79, he came on and went to work for the city full-time. And then after he retired in 2004, he became a councilman, in '06, I think it was, for 16 years. I've been with the city of Gaston for 45 years. This last summer was 45 years. I've enjoyed every minute of it. Some's been good times, some been bad times. We've, this whole council's been through a lot. When I first came up here on the council, I knew it all. I was the first person that knew everybody that worked at the city, all the department heads, and I was going to change the world. I thought I knew it all. Well, lo and behold, Ms. Jenny Shavers and Iva Nelson set me straight. It didn't take long to set me straight. Jenny's probably kept me out of jail numerous times. She's come to me and said, "Hey, why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? What's wrong with you?" She's gave me all kinds of legal advice, and her legal advice was really good because it was free. And she really has helped me. And I just want to say this group of people I've worked with for 16 years is some of the best people I've been around, you know? When I was here, there was all the old guys, and I was the young generation that were coming up, and now I'm sitting here, one of the oldest guys here now, you know, as council. Not the oldest being, but one of us. And Sherman, but, you know, it's time, you know when God's got a time and a place for you to, to move on to something else, so I'm fixing to start a new chapter in my life. I've got four grandkids. Every one of them's playing ball now, and they live in Tuscaloosa and Tampa, and so I've got to go and make sure I take care of those grandkids and watch them play ball all the time. And I've got a wife that she's been through a lot with me over these 45 years, and it's time of him and her spend some quality time together and do whatever she wants to do. And I do appreciate everybody here, and I will say farewell.
Councilman Reed.
Now you know why you say me for last every time. I tell you what, y'all eloquently covered everything now, and I believe you meant it. I really do. This is the best council I ever sat on. The last two years have been rather hellish, but outside of that, I've enjoyed every minute of it, and we stuck together, y'all, like we said. Behave yourself, close your mouth, because they made us, and carry on. But for 24 years, I've been sitting here, and I can say that because I've been on six councils, going back to Dawson and Bob and all of them, but this one right here held together, y'all, and I'm not too sure the rest of them would, but I know we would and did. Buster, thank you for coming all this time. Curly's passed on, so on and so forth. To all the employees of the city that have always been helpful to me, honestly, I can't think of one that didn't. I wouldn't be here if they didn't help me. And it's been said by Debrick and Johnny and, they're kidding around about going to jail, but they actually, Jenny Shaver and, they've kept me out of jail twice. But it was because I was ignorant to the facts, Steve, and I thought I knew everything, but when you get down and start reading the Ethics Commission's guidelines, you kind of have to worry. Then you hope there's a Jenny and an Iva pretty close by to straighten you out anyway. Thank you, y'all. That's all I have, and just outside, I enjoyed it, and goodbye.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. You know, I was a football and basketball coach, and then I got into real estate business and never thought about running for office. And I was, excuse me, I was so shy, I had to give a three-minute speech in senior English, and I was sweating. It was just running down my face, that's how shy I was. But somewhere along the line, I guess I sort of got over it, but since I've been with the council for the last, when I ran, I thought it wouldn't be just a couple of years. I've been here 16 years, but I've enjoyed every bit of it, and the council has always been good to work with. Of course, you know, everybody has issues sometimes, but everybody always was able to work out what they needed to do, and I really appreciate all that. And all the city workers, had a lot of people who are good workers, they did a good job, and I appreciated all the work they did too, because I feel like we've really been able to move things along, to make things better for the next bunch coming in. And I just appreciate all of y'all that worked here, because I always would, I was never afraid to ask for help, because, you know, I know I wasn't the smartest one in the room. But we've had some good times and got a lot of good things done, and I just want to appreciate all of you. Thanks.
Anybody out there want to cry? I call for a motion to adjourn. Okay.
I just want the record to show that Iva just let me go to jail. She didn't get me out of nothing.